Make a motion.
Accept is written.
All right, let me ask one question. I've got no feelings about this number or another. But do we need to mention in this that we thought that the two one both passed that, passed the, that's Alex's, uh, permission that we take, uh, that guy from the second company to cut down the house? Cut down the house? I believe it. And it wasn't until after the fact that we found out that the two one didn't do that.
Mm-hmm.
This is like it just happened as the two one at the airport didn't pass. Any of you should put that in there? I would.
I did not put in that there was that presumption. Because I've built cases minutes after the fact and at that point we knew what the result was.
Was that the horizon ever contacted and said, we told them that they'd win it?
No, because we brought it, we're back on business.
All right, so it's basically amongst us girls.
Right.
Okay. Never mind. I'm gonna make that motion, I'll second it.
All right, so Stan has the first.
Second.
Tom has the second. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Um, okay, under new business, um, and I also would like to, to point out that we continue several of the items from last meeting's agenda on to this one because we wanted to, speed up the process a little bit, uh, last, uh, two, two Mondays ago. So these are things that would have been on the regular agenda had we not had a, a such a big game. Um, but the first item is a row of Leland cypresses, um, in between the Beckham property and the resident that lives at the end of Main Street, right next to the railroad tracks. When we took down all of the, the ground cover, the rubbing, and took out all the trees and the overgrowth out there, you can see into that young lady's, uh, back porch and into her backyard. Um, and as soon as I realized how much of her view was exposed, I told her right off that, we'll do something to cover it up. Um, now that it's starting to get springtime, things are starting to grow, I'd like to go ahead and put, um, a request before council for, to approve us purchasing the Leland cypresses to install over there. We're gonna need ten of them on an offset row, so they're staggered and create a true windbreak in a hedgerow. I'd like to get, uh, permission from council to, to spend an amount, not to exceed a thousand, twelve hundred, fifteen hundred, whatever you guys think would be appropriate, not to exceed that. And then between all the work that we, we have building upon and that we will have going on, I will get somebody to install them, either the county, Barbara Valley, or one of these other contractors that we're probably gonna have on the grounds over the next thirty days. My goal would be to have them in the ground, um, certainly, probably by the middle of February, um, but I don't, but I just don't know what the timing is gonna be. And I don't know if I wanna keep pushing it back till February and then come back and, because I know we're gonna, I know we're gonna need to, to plant them, I know we're gonna need to purchase them. And I just wanted to come to council and explain what I needed and see what you guys thought and if y'all had any suggestions.
Any, any value at all in having somebody like breaking ground come in and look at our overall landscaping and give us an idea what we can do, including that? Not necessarily do anything now, but just make it where it fits. Because there are a lot of things other than Leland cypress we can use, the green giants, depending on the, depending on the, uh, the shading of the trees that are down there.
Right, right.
Everything from unianus to, to green giants.
And I, and I'd be using Leland cypress as a, as a general placeholder for, uh, evergreen, uh, conifer.
Yeah.
Ever growing tall bush, you know? So it could be, and they end up being a, a blue cypress or Leland or.
Yeah, so what they might say to do is, they might say like, put, put four of these, three of these, two of these. They're all over.
Sure, absolutely. And if, and if they do that, and, and you guys, and of course, as soon as we make the decision, find it, you'll get, you guys will find, y'all will find out.
I wouldn't think they'd come in and do it for nothing in anticipation of bidding on the bushes.
Yes, yeah, they probably would. Mm-hmm. And I, and I also have had some thoughts of wrapping, I have had thoughts of waiting to do that till we did a landscape design, but I don't wanna make a young lady wait because as we get more stuff done, I think we're gonna have people out here and, and I just, I would just wanna go ahead and take care of it if I can. But certainly if they have a better suggestion than a Leland cypress, because those aren't perfect plants, you know, they do tend to split, they do tend to brown out in patches, so that may not be the best way there.
The Leland cypress is going along the lines of where the red tips went. Remember the red tips, they were real popular back in the seventies, eighties?
Mm-hmm.
People see them anymore, it's some kind of fungus got them.
Right.
And, and the Leland cypress are prone to some things that come along.
Okay.
I'll, I'll, I'll volunteer to go down and talk to them.
Sure, oh yeah, absolutely.
I buy from them and I'll just, I'll just ask them what, what we should do.
Okay.
And I'll get an idea of the, you talking about just a, a wall?
I'm talking like.
Between the, between the Beckhams and that house?
Mm-hmm. And if you actually, if you go out there, you can see where I have flags stapled all the way along, or just a general place where I was, you know.
All I looked for was, you know, where there's a, a tree that would block it.
Mm-hmm, right.
Because it's, you'll end up within ten years, you'll end up with a five foot tree next to a twenty foot.
Mm-hmm, right.
You know, if there was a tree.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. A little segue, but.
I mean, when you need relatively mature trees going in to, for it to do anything at all, if you just got planted Leland cypress from Home Depot, I mean, they're barely two feet tall, you know?
I was, no, I was gonna go with a larger, a larger tree, probably a thirty gallon, which is about five or six feet tall, from what I can tell.
Yeah.
And of course, if they recommend, you know, a twenty gallon or forty gallon, I'll just.
Well, that's, the, the, a thirty gallon tree's gonna cost you a hundred bucks.
Yeah, and that's kinda where I came up with a thousand dollars or so.
And if you, if you let them plant it, it's gonna cost you a thousand more because they charge, they charge this, whatever the tree costs, they charge you that much more if you plant it.
So as far as the install, we've got a number of things that are going on around here. Um, what I was gonna try to do was when we had something scheduled, I was gonna ask the installer, be it the, the painter, or the fence people, or the pond people, and say, hey, can you go ahead and install these? And then we would just negotiate a price. Obviously, until we're five hundred, I'd come to you guys and say, hey, do y'all approve this? But hopefully it'll be under five hundred because they'll already be out there, already have the equipment and we can have things happen efficiently.
I think Slade was gonna, as part of his original bid on that Beckham house, while he was tearing things up, he was gonna use his equipment to.
Yep.
Scratch the holes so it's free.
Mm-hmm, exactly.
So, that's, that's a thousand bucks.
Yes, exactly.
All right, well, I'll go down there and talk to them.
You're gonna have to break, talk to the breaking ground?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and.
If they blow me off, I gotta go somewhere else, there's certain places in the area.
Okay, okay. So what is an amount that council would feel comfortable with authorizing, uh, for this expenditure? I was thinking a thousand, twelve hundred, but certainly, um, I would not think more than fifteen hundred, and I'm gonna try to keep it under that if I can.
If it gets, if it gets to be fifteen hundred, you just go to twenty, twenty gallon pots instead of thirty gallon pots.
Right.
You just have to live with the idea of a forty, a four foot tree versus a ten, a five foot tree. It just straightened a little bit.
Yeah, well, I mean, if, if they had twenty gallon pots, I don't know if they did, they made, but you're right, we could go down one size and.
Yeah, I know, I've, I've bought, I've bought a bunch of them behind my house, and I bought six feet tall, and they were thirty gallon. And I could've got five feet and they were twenty.
Okay.
And that was a green giant, which is the first cousin of Leland.
Yeah.
All right. I'll do that. I'll, I'll, and I'll, I'll just send you a note when I get something.
Okay. So can I get a motion if it pleases council?
I think fifteen hundred's a good number.
Fifteen hundred? All right. Um, if I can get a motion to, from council to authorize spending of not to exceed fifteen hundred on purchase of a hedgerow, uh, Leland cypress hedgerow for.
You're gonna try to get the install done under five hundred?
Yes.
In addition to that.
Mm-hmm, yeah, and the install will be in addition to that.
Right.
I'll second that.
That, will we, do they make an official motion?
Absolutely.
I'll, I'll make a motion if it will.
All right. So Alex has the first.
I'll second.
Tom has the second. All in favor? Unanimous, thank you. Um, the next item on the agenda is not necessarily an actionable item, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. Um, several of y'all have, have mentioned over the years about having muddy water and, and having just general water quality issues. Um, while the water that, that we get from cheering does tend to be high quality, and I grew up on it and I've always enjoyed it, um, we have noticed there having some water quality issues over the last couple of years, um, and I just wanted to bring it to you guys and let you know that we're hearing it from folks even outside of council. And while I check with cheering, anytime I hear, I normally get an explanation, which, you know, makes sense and, and, and most of the times they're, they're, they're responsive to it, um, but I wanted to bring it to, to y'all as a council to say, this is something that, that we need to keep our ears open for, um, and be, be prepared to think of, or be, be aware of any other actions that come along and how we may approach it.
I'm not volunteering anything on my part, but I, I've got an in-house filtration system and I change it every three months, and I know what's coming in as far as crud.
Mm-hmm.
And I have seen times when it's, it's darker red than your shirt is, or dark, dark orange.
Yeah.
But I haven't seen that, I hadn't seen that in two years.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. But I have noticed an awful flavor in the morning sometimes. And that's usually where they get out of whack when they're cleaning.
Mm-hmm.
And it, it forms some compounds there.
Yeah. Most of the complaints tend to be about the crud, like you say, in the water, and it usually tends to happen in periods of heavier rain, which we've had a lot of rain, or if they've had a break. Um, we also know that this system was put in in the nineteen sixties, and those polybutylene pipes are just starting to crack, and there's probably some infiltration going on.
Locally.
Locally, yes, along.
Somebody's house was complaining.
Possibly, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, it's just, I'm bringing it to you so that we can talk about it as a council, figure out a way to approach it. There are things in our contract that we have with them that was signed in twenty seventeen about repairs and updates and maintenance. I don't have an update on that, um, but we will continue to follow up and ask and see where they are with, um, some of their responsibilities. Is there anything anybody else wants to add on the, um, water quality?
Whenever I change my filter, I'll let you know if it was crude.
Okay.
I'm taking pictures of it.
Mm-hmm, yep.
And I've, and I've screwed around with Alan a little bit on it too. Do you want me to send him his dirt back?
Um, yes, and, and, and that's the other thing, if you get any pictures from anybody, please forward them to Floyd so he can, he can just keep track of them. All right. Um, next item of business is our procurement policy. Um, I've been grumbling quietly sometimes and not so quietly at other times about the procurement policy, um, that we have, and it's not that the policy I don't think is, is as wrong, it's the environment today makes the, the procedure cumbersome. Um, a, a perfect example was the fence discussion that we had two weeks ago. Um, one quote was received on October seventeenth, the next one, just because of the run of business and, and competing priorities, didn't happen until the second week of January. There were big differences in the, in the two quotes and the two bids. Um, and as much as I brag on our staff and as good as they are, um, they are not supermen nor superwomen. Um, as a part-time mayor, I also have other responsibilities outside of the town, and I, I bring up all that to say, if we can come up with a cleaner or friendlier procurement policy that still meets the transparency requirements that local government requires and needs, I would like to find that because as transparent as we are about budgeting and about how much money we spend and where we put what, there's just no, there's no benefit to us arguing over who's related to who when it comes to procurement. If somebody wants to help this town, and God bless them if they wanna give us a good deal, I say all for it. I've come to you guys before and we've had items on the agenda, and they sit here for months and we finally get to a point of where we can move on an item, any item, and we stumble over our procurement policy. We ought not to run into that. Now, I, like I said to some of y'all after the last meeting, the fence bids were my mistake. I, I should've cleaned them up and I should've organized them and, and should've, would've, could've. But I would like to come to y'all with some options and some opportunities for procurement, especially before we go out and do big multi-thousand dollars in jobs. Doing a fence or doing a clean out or planting some trees is a little different than whatever demolition we do. Um, so I want to find a, a, bring to you a good procurement policy that we can, that we can use simply, that is available to the public, and there's, there's no surprises for council or for the vendors or for the vendors, because I wanna, I want to keep their goodwill as well, and, and having a guy come out and, and do a bid two or three times because we didn't get all the information in the first place, it's just not good governance, it's just not good business.
Or didn't ask you for it in the first place.
Or even having, or remembering the exact question to frame and asking for when you do it eight weeks apart.
Yeah.
Um, so we are going to be bringing up some examples of procurement policies. Um, I have spoken with Noonan, they have different levels of, of procurement that are not anything as big as an RFP, but it's a notice of bid or notice of announcement, Brad, is that the, the lower level? I was talking, I had a conversation with Cletus a week and a half or so ago about some, about some of.
I mean, they, they have various levels. Now, I don't get involved in that, so I don't.
Okay.
Probably get involved in the higher level.
Mm-hmm, right.
I don't know exactly.
Right, right.
Partly, and it's basically small items that are budgetary items from a purchase order standpoint, and they have different levels of expenditures.
Kind of right, yeah.
And of course, you gotta, gotta remember, under their policy, the city manager can make awards up to fifty thousand dollars, so it's a.
Yeah.
Now, he has to report it on what they did in their policies.
Yeah.
And he has to get, so if he sends out a, a notice for something, um, that is a, say a fence or something like that, uh, then, I mean, they get to, if it's less than the fifty thousand, they get to do certain things.
Right.
And usually the department heads go out and get those kinds of quotes and the city manager signs off on.
Mm-hmm.
Usually they try to get as many as they can get, as you can imagine, so they do publicize them.
Yeah.
Uh, to be able to get that, but there, there's a different level. Uh, the difference, and I'm just giving my two cents, in what y'all've gotten experienced here in the last couple of things, is that when, even if you put out a notice, you tell them what you want.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I've looked at the bids on the fence, everybody bid different things as to what was wanted, same thing with taking the house down.
Mm-hmm.
I sent, um, Floyd a copy of the RFP that the city put out for no purpose, not that you have to have the seventeen page document, they did.
Right.
And that, but at least the small items, that you know, everybody's bidding on the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
Under the, under the, under the, uh, blessing, beacon on the horizon, that good government starts at the local level?
Mm-hmm.
I'd hate to see this thing, I'd hate to see it become a social engineering, uh, document. I'd hate for it to be, I'd hate for the first, the first half of it to be that you have to have a woman on the board of directors and you have to have LGDT, whatever it is, uh, money to go to your secretary if that's what she wants. I wanna know how much it would cost us to tear the goddamn house down? And I don't wanna do social engineering.
I, I don't, I, I don't, that's not my plan.
Okay.
The plan, the plan.
I just, I just mentioned it because I can see it happening, I, I, cause I know if you try to do something at Atlanta Airport, you wouldn't believe what you gotta do at Atlanta Airport. I mean, you gotta give, you know, twenty percent of your revenues to a false company to satisfy their requirements that, that you have a minority on the business. I mean, and it's, and it's, and we would never do something like that, but it's a baby step. If you, if you start doing little things, it's a baby step to the next thing, and I don't wanna, I don't wanna act like.
No.
These spots or something like that.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, and that's, and, and honestly, I, I personally, I don't think we're so far down that road, I'm just like you. I just wanna get the, I just wanna, I just, I just wanna have a good bid that passes muster, passes the smell test to the public, and then we can just move on with it.
I don't think anybody will ever second guess us if what we do is we say, what we're gonna do is we're gonna tear this house down, we want the stuff to haul off, we want the ground, uh, graded so we can plant grass, and all the trash haul off.
Are we providing a, I guess that's what we're getting at here, are we providing some sort of document to these contractors that says, here's our punch list, what's it gonna cost us to get this done? I mean, that, that seems, that seems like a simple.
Yes, yes, that's what we're looking at coming up with.
Or are we, have we just been doing it by discussion, saying, oh, here's what we're thinking about, why don't you give us a bid on it? That's one thing.
Yes, yes, that's what we've been doing, is bidding, bidding by discussion.
I mean, it wouldn't make sense to have a simple, like a work order, essentially, right? It says, you know, here's what we're, obviously, they can make changes to it and include that in their quotes, okay? We might suggest something as a council or as a mayor, as even the clerk, somebody can suggest something that's not.
Right.
The right way of doing it, okay, we'll strike that line item and say, they could come back with their quote, but they're still satisfying our punch list, so we know that, you know, this guy and this guy and this other guy, they all checked the boxes of what we're looking for. My problem with the, you know, the last discussion at the last meeting was just the difference in detail of the quotes, you know, then we wind up at a point where it's difficult to say, because we're going off of word of mouth, well, you know, X person said they would do this and do that, you know, so, um, I don't, I don't think we need anything more than that, personally, uh, more than us deciding, you know, what's our, what's our punch list, what are we looking to have done, as long as they satisfy that criteria, then it's up to us to make the best decision of.
Yeah.
Getting the best value.
We're right, and it is, but what we need to have is a policy that is consistent and defensible and, mm, fair.
Yeah. Then, it, it's not a step back, but I'm gonna carry forward just a, a little bit of what I just said about the social engineering part. You need to, you might have a statement in there that, that if it's over a certain amount, they have to have it de-verify. You have to have a certain thing, you ought to have a thing in there that says that they meet all local and regional building companies, uh, basic OSHA requirements, okay? But that's, and that's different than some of the other stuff that I mentioned.
Right.
You, you got, you need to have that, insurance.
Mm-hmm.
Just, just a statement.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that would be under the required documents.
Yeah.
Part of the, part of the solicitation.
In the, in the corporate world, we always call these the weasel words.
Mm-hmm, yep.
I do have a question for you.
Sure.
When you say making the process more fair, what do you, can you expand on that?
Um, yeah, just making sure that everybody knows what is expected of them. Um, like you say, having the, this item, this item, this item, and this item, because I can't, and see, that, that was a position that I found myself in on this last meeting, is I had had conversations with each of them, and I knew what you, each of them were gonna do, but I can't, after I, it's not fair for me, after I talk to one contractor, to go to know and say, well, this guy's gonna do this. That gets into bid rigging, and that's the kinda stuff that I wouldn't step back and avoid, because that's, I, I'm not going there. I'm quite simply not gonna go there. And yes, I may know something that the other contractors have told me, but I can't, I'm not gonna go over here and tell you guys, because guess what? I've told you something that may not be true, may not be factual, and you may make your decision off of that. And that's, so that, I, that's kinda what I mean, just.
Yeah, it just, it's just bad as if, you know, if, if we did not have a document, like you're talking about creating, a bid request, if we didn't have that, and the conversation was had with you, and then you reprove yourself, or reprove yourself, or whatever it was, and then you go outside.
Mm-hmm.
There's nobody to tell us what they told you.
Yeah. Right.
Yeah. So, but that's.
Is that what I just said? I didn't, I didn't, I didn't wanna get in that position?
Yeah, but it was.
So, well, well, because I didn't want to get, I don't wanna be put in the position of the contractor saying, well, he said this in the meeting, and I didn't really say that. That's the position I want to.
Yeah, it's, you, it's really.
Yeah.
It's all terrible.
Mm-hmm, yep. And if we have a policy and a procedure that is, is clean and, and, and smooth and easy, and at the same time, when they're getting six to seven hundred phone calls a month, it's hard for them to chase down the three bids. It's hard for me to chase down the three bids. Now, that's not, I hate, I hate the son of a making an excuse for it, I kinda swear I am, and, and, that's, but it's, it's hard with our limited staff and our limited dollars, we just, we can't get everything done in a day.
One of the good things about being small is we can act. One of the bad things about being small is we can't remember everything.
That's right.
So, yeah, let's do this and let's go forth and send them on.
I kinda feel like if we could just come up with a form for these bid requests, uh, we could use that as sort of a, a litmus test, we could always build a policy.
Yeah.
Around how that works for us.
Yeah.
Whatever other projects we do, we get the form and we say, hey, you know what? The form's great, but we should add X, Y, Z to the policy to improve it. Um, I mean, we're obviously, we don't have a city manager, we're not at the level where we're gonna just have someone, okay, we can approve the spending because we got the money, it's gonna have to be brought before the council, but, um, I, to me, with the standout thing is, yeah, having, having a form that so that, like I walked in here at the last meeting, I, honestly, I didn't even know we were taking down that house or had bids for it. Uh, part of that's on me, cause I'm a little bit out of the loop, but also, if I had a, a reference material to look at, and I could just look at a bid and then look at what the town asked for and match it up, and if you write a poorly, poorly written bid and it doesn't match up, then it is what it is.
Yeah.
You know, we may, and maybe we're missing out on a deal. That guy might've brought us a great deal, but it was poorly written, so we weren't able to, you know, vote on it, cause the details weren't there. But having a reference document, I think would be a good start for us, and simple to create a one-page form that says, you know, we could sit here and do it at the meeting, that says, okay, what are we looking for? Okay, put that on the form and start getting bids, and, uh, wherever that falls short, I think we could add to that policy pretty easily, without overcomplicate it.
So, and, and that, that's, that sounds great, that's in line, I think, with what we want, um, system-wise, I think it covers us legally. I just, I needed, I, I needed, especially after the last one, I needed, we needed to have further discussions on it and then get a little bit more direction from council on, um, filling out the boxes. All right, um, Stan, anything on that? Anything else that you got? Um, Brad, do you have any other comments on, on staying safe with procurement and all that?
Other than what, I, I think what you need to do is have a workshop, something, and look at the current policy. We need to look at, you know, the state requirements on procurement, uh, because you can't, I mean, you have to assume that there's certain things that you have to do. In other words, we start getting sidewalk projects, you've got to advertise those in the newspaper, you've got to take bids not on just repair, I'm talking about a full project. You have to follow what state bidding requirements are on certain transportation projects. Uh, you've got to follow the city's ethics requirements on any level, so that's kinda what we're getting into, is at what point on some of this stuff, because we are small, and at what point do you have actual conflict versus perceived conflict? You know, that tail bug, city. State law is very careful about the fact that you have to have financial interest, not simply visual related to something, but you have to have financial interest in what is going on, so, I don't know, I'm, what little bit I know about you recusing yourself, I'm not you, you gotta recuse yourself.
And, and I kinda thought the same thing too, it was a dear cousin, but at the same time.
That, that, you know, that, that happens.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Small thing.
Yeah.
But the general rule is, if you are an immediate family member has financial interest in it, then you need to recuse yourself.
Mm-hmm.
So if your wife's cousin, if she was on the board of directors of the company and didn't pay that fee, then you would need to recuse yourself, but simply because he's a cousin, and he may be making money off of it, that's no reason to recuse yourself.
Okay.
Now, you may wanna disclose that, uh, which is always a good thing to do, but that does not disqualify you from that standpoint, if the vote comes up.
Thank you, thank you.
So that's why I say, it's, it's, you can look at the current procurement policy, how it's operating, if you wanna give some limits up to a certain point on certain things and increase it. And in fact, I think right now the limit on the mayor is what?
Five hundred.
Five hundred. At one time, it was a thousand more, I think, in, in council, at a previous, they reduced that. So if you wanna turn around, that would take care of some of this stuff that you're talking about, punchbowl, some of these other things that you could do, and go ahead and get quotations on that, go ahead and make a decision, put it down.
Yeah.
On the other hand, if you start getting into something over five thousand dollars per half, then not only under the procurement, then you've got some source, you've got some other. then not only under the procurement, and you've got sole source, and you've got some other things that you can do on the council's standpoint, but at the same time, it's always imperative as to whatever you send out, and you request quotes, A, you give them a deadline, while you have a month in between somebody furnishing a quote for somebody else. Give a deadline in, in whatever you put out, RFP, or request, or propose, or, or if it's a, you know, notice of, however you wanna, um, catch it, as long as the main thing is telling the people what it is you want them to bid on, or furnish a proposal on, so that, you know, offer A, offer B, and offer C, know exactly what to do. Now, whether or not they offer all of that in their proposal, then that's up to them, or if they change something, then council has to go back and make a decision on that. But, problem I saw, I mean, you had three different proposals on the tear down, you know, and nobody was proposing exactly the same thing. And so, you need, need all of them to be on the same page to be able to make a proposal. So, anyway, but I think that's the main thing that you need to do, is everybody sit down, because technically, there's nothing, as far as I recall, there's nothing wrong with procurement policy that you have. As far as covering all those issues. I have a question, operationally, do you need to take a look at it, if what you're doing, because it hamstrings you on getting this done? Then I think that's what you need to do.
Don't throw the thing down in the bathwater, is what I should say. Um, Floyd, do you have any questions or any follow-ups? I know that you've looked at this more than I have over the last couple of weeks.
Not right now, I've, I've got some things, I'm working on with the gardeners, and I can come up to it, but right now, I think, pretty much, what's been said, you can say.
Okay. So, do we have any other final questions about new business, or anything else that we've discussed up to this point? Okay, for thirty-nine Main Street, um, I don't really have an update, other than, um, we're gonna go back and redo the procurement policy. Brad, in this situation, do you think it would be okay for us to go ahead and produce the bid sheet?
Sure.
That we're talking about, and then send it back out to these three, and get it, get it redrafted, so we have this come back up with consideration?
Yeah.
Okay. And even if it's not the final form, we're not, because we're not doing anything that we shouldn't, right? Even if it's not in the final approved form, the bid sheet, does the bid sheet have to be approved by council before we start using it?
No.
That's, that's where I was trying to go, actually.
No, I'm sorry, yeah.
I, I asked that question before.
No.
Okay.
Well, what I would do, take a look at three proposals that you have, and you can tell what you wanna do. And put that in your sheet. Now, what I said Floyd, probably covers all of that, but, um, in other words, you wanna make sure that they're able to, this particular instance specifically, uh, determine if there's asbestos in the house. And I think you have an inspection, I'm not sure that I've seen inspection, as to whether it's asbestos there, because that has to be disposed of differently.
Right.
And one of the proposals was that you, the city, was gonna dispose of it. And so, if you put asbestos in the dumpster, and you haul the dumpster off, EPD's gonna come back home to city, if they determine there's asbestos there. So, anytime you're in the demolition of something like that, you've gotta be careful about,
Yeah.
You know, now, one of the other bidders, I think the other two bidders were gonna haul all the stuff off, and, and dispose of it, so you have to assume that they knew what was in there. The problem was, we know there's asbestos, we need to tell them. So, one of the first things that they need to do is go on-site and do their own inspection, before they submit a proposal, and you furnish to them whatever you need, because you don't wanna get in a situation, and the contract guy comes back and say, well, you didn't tell us there was asbestos in there, and then kind of write back, so.
My experience with asbestos is in, in California and in Mexico, and there's, there's there's two kinds of asbestos, and in Georgia, is, is this the case? If, if it's contained, like, if it's in a, an undamaged pipe, that's a pipe case wrapping, painted, uh, that's one thing, but if it's busted loose and, and dusted, otherwise, that's something separate.
Correct.
Two different things.
Two different things, and you have to make that from the top.
Okay.
Yeah. I will say, in other jurisdictions, we got in trouble one time, and, and the city got in trouble, uh, where they were, uh, contractors were tearing down houses, and burying asbestos singles from the roof and from the side of the house in the ground, on-site. And EPD called us, and, 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 uh, obviously, that, that the city's building department was not overseeing what was going on, and that was a nice little fight. And, and, of course, the contractor was gone by that time, the city actually had to go out there and dig the stuff out, haul it off.
And the dirt around it.
Pardon?
And the dirt around it.
Well, yeah. There, the dirt that, it come in contact, so you had to dig, dig your hole.
Was lead paint in that same category still? Is lead paint?
Lead paint is still in a category on the material, as I understand it, if it's chippable.
Okay.
In other words, you know what, if it, if you can still dispose of it in the landfill, if the wall material is not chippable, now, I can't tell you exactly what it is, but that.
And the, the sixty-five thousand dollar question, or sixty-four thousand dollar question is, how you gonna destroy a house, that tear it down, and not bust up wood and release it?
Well, I, again, I think it's, there are levels as to what you can do.
But proper business, the name is, it's, it's a concern, just like with asbestos.
Correct. But you, I mean, and, and people who are familiar with doing these demolitions, they know what those are, and they know how to put that in the bid to take care of whatever it is they have to do. And usually, it's, my understanding is, you take it to different landfills. In other words, you can take, as that, because of the difference in the way this certain city, being landfills are done, you're taking concrete, this kind of stuff, versus land, landfills, where you can take stuff, like, probably asbestos and stuff like that. So, but anyway, that, you just rely on the contractor for, because I think what you want them to do, to haul it off.
Yeah, including something like that in your, in your procedure, your request for a bid, that's gonna weed out something. That's what you need out.
Yes, yes, it will. Yep. All right, um, okay, so that is our update for thirty-nine Main Street. Um, you do have some more quotes in front of you for the back parking lot fences. Um, had a question after the last, um, council meeting, can you have one of the companies come back and do an actual, uh, crossbook, the X, for, um, for that fit, so we, so we can compare? Um, Certifab also provided additional information, so if this sheet has their additional information, and then the, thing is, the last sheet has Clements' bid on there.
And again, there's a basic difference, two oh four versus two forty. Two hundred and forty feet versus two forty.
So, Certifab's price is still thirty-five hundred, that was listed on the original quote?
Mm-hmm. Yes, I think so, because I don't see anything on here that, that is different, and all of the price is equal out to that twelve oh eight per foot, running foot.
Yeah, I don't have a calculator, but this, the Clements is about eighteen?
Eighteen fifty.
Eighteen fifty? And it looks like, uh, Clements is asking us to locate the underground utilities, and clear the fence lines and grave. And I don't know what the other guys are gonna do. No, I don't know what he's gonna do, as far as the, as far as the clearing the lines, but, but he said he would, I think his number four is he'd coordinate that with the call before you dig.
We've got that line up for, on the updated quote. For Certifab, you know, coordinate and define conflicts with where he's dropping posts at, it looks like.
Based on utilities, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. We don't have the sprinkler out there, do we?
Not that far, but we may end up based on what, um, landscaping we do, but I don't know, that'd be kind of a far place to run a sprinkler line, the only place I could think of would be in that other island, that is about halfway through the back.
But that would be, the sprinklers would come after this one, wouldn't it? Yes, that's a good point.
Yeah. Well, I think, no, I think that's just a generic thing that they put on the Clements, because I've, I've seen that on some of their other bids.
But two hundred and forty feet is satisfactory, that's what we're looking for?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
I talked to, and, and, this is, again, it's something that our procurement procedure on the cover, but I talked to one of the guys who was out there putting up that black chain link fence, and he, and he, uh, told me about the X fence, or the, uh, split rail. When I asked him about the X fence, he described it exactly. He described it as exactly the way they, they built up the purple buildings out. So, it's, at least, at least their employees' understanding, and what we've, what Slade has put out, are the same.
Y-yes, and, and when I talked with Dustin, I made sure, I said, you know, sort of the X with the box around it, and the running post.
No wire, no wire.
No wire.
No gables.
Yeah.
So, except for the distance, you pretty much push over here.
Mm-hmm.
Wasn't there something on this thing that Slade had sent in about the, uh, with that mound of trash and debris?
Yep, yeah, it's on there.
He was gonna do that for another six, another six hundred, I'd go, I would go, I'd go down there, and look at that, that's a, that's a, that's a pile of stuff.
Is that where our old sign is down here, or is that where it's done?
No, it's the stuff behind.
Not behind, back in the corner down there.
By the parking lot, right?
Um.
Cause you got, you got
Behind the new parking lot.
Based, four by six, or six by sixes, and
Yeah, okay, 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 yeah, yeah.
Containing the trash.
There is some stuff down there that I would like to try to reuse, but I do think I would certainly like to take advantage of it and have it cleaned up. It does, it does need to be cleaned up, and at least organized or re.
I think his point, and I don't wanna make it sound like I'm conspiring with him, but his point was, put a fence up for, you know, for whatever, yeah, paint.
How are we gonna get to the stuff?
Hey, if you get to the policy.
Yeah, that's true, yeah, that's true, yeah, 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 yeah. Yeah, we'd have to figure something out, but I, but I do think in our follow-up conversations, we didn't quite take the fence all the way down there. Yeah, because the way that it goes is, the walking trail comes along here, and then you've got a little bit of a hill, or a little bit of a, a step-off off the edge of the sidewalk, but as you get down, it kinda starts to scoot in, and then right here back at the corner, it comes and slopes down, so you only literally have, maybe from me to the table to go to, whereas further up, you've got maybe another foot or so behind it. It, it kinda starts to slope away as you get back towards the junk.
Well, junk needs to be moved, whether it's as part of this project, or
Yes, no, no, absolutely, we, we gotta get it out of the way, and dispose of what we can use, and, and reuse what we can. Does council have a preference for either of the bids?
Well, I'll make a motion to go with Certifab.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a first and a second, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you. All right, um, new business and old business being concluded, uh, do I have any comments from the public?
Have a question.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry.
Do you wanna wait on the six hundred for the move of the trash, or?
Well, that's included in his.
Yeah, 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 it's, it's included in his.
He's got an existing trash.
Yes, included. All right. Okay, new business and old business being concluded, do we have any, uh, comments from the public?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Based on the other meeting, and also something, every time you said public, you looked at me really hard, and I guess. But anyway, I'm the only public you got. Based on what Tom said, he brought up the word recuse, and then what Brad said, he said perceived, I believe. I went back after that last meeting to look at the charter, to see what it said about procurement, or interest, and it uses the word directly or indirectly in the charter, where it says
Financial?
Contracts, yeah. Uh, I borrowed a copy of it. I'm slow getting up, folks.
No, 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 I'll come to you, I'll come to you, stay right there.
Well, yeah, I got one in here, one for you and one for, one for him. Uh, it says directly, give one to Brad.
Because a director, you're a financial interest.
Yeah, 'cause there was such a confusion at the last meeting, that people coming and going, and who was recused and who wasn't recused, and I thought, I went back to look and see what it said.
So, basically, it's, it's financial interest.
Well, it's, use the word directly and indirectly, what is, you know what direct is, what is indirect?
Indirect, I would, indirect would be if, like, if.
Let, I'm gonna let the attorney do it. He said perceived and not perceived, which I imagine would cover that.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Yeah.
Our direct would be if the mayor owned it, indirect would be if his daughter owned it.
Say again.
Direct would be if the mayor owned it, indirect would be if his daughter owned it, or his wife owned it, or his father owned it.
Okay.
That's the indirect.
That's indirect.
That's indirect, and that's, that's under, under state law that talks about that. Now, cousins, unless you're getting a direct, is
Well, yeah, yeah, I understand cousins, it's probably argued.
This is exactly what we were saying.
Yeah.
And that's why I said, I don't think, what I was saying, perceived is that, is that I don't think the mayor had to recuse himself on that last vote for, for the ethics ordinances, uh, because he had no direct or indirect financial interest in it.
I was wondering why he didn't come back and vote on that second time, that's what I was wondering, why he didn't come back in here, but anyways, here and there, you've answered my question, thank you.
Um, it, it, it was just being safe and sorry, you know, I just, I would just rather be safe and sorry.
Let me ask you a question, too. Certifab is my son-in-law, he's my, my stepdaughter's husband, stepdaughter. I have no financial involvement with him at all, except that he owes me some money.
Are you able to get it?
Never, you don't, when you let people, your family bar, you know, you're.
But as long as you don't have a direct financial interest in his.
In other words, I'm, I'm not a silent partner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You've never been silent, Tom. Always strounding at me.
I'm not, anything else was possible? Okay.
Mr. Nolly? Two things, and you kinda touched on it, those Leaven and Cypress, you wanna plant that in twelve, fifteen hundred dollars worth? Somebody's gonna have to put water on them for the first year. So, you guys, you mentioned something about possibly sprinkler irrigation, possibly, just something you might wanna think about. And the other thing, we're talking about the procurement policy, um, can we not work with another city that's a little larger than us, and get a policy from them, and maybe have
So one of the options that will probably hopefully be in the, the procurement policy is the piggyback policy. And that's exactly what you say, if we have a job to be done, we could piggyback on another municipality's contract. Um, and that is allowed in state law, I don't know if, so do we have to do anything in specifically to be able to do that? Or is it just becomes part of the, one of the bids?
I, I'd have to go back and take a look, I don't know why you couldn't. But I mean, just like my lease car is on the state contract.
Mm-hmm, right, right, we're just using the municipality's contract.
Well, you got a lot of stuff coming up that we want to get done, you don't want to keep putting it off month after month at that point. We need to get it done, let's get a policy put in place that would work for everybody.
I would think that would be a pretty quick thing.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not a lock it's not.
Yeah, it, yeah, it's not, and now that we've got direction from council, support from attorney, I think that's something we can go in and just push out.
Around the, around the house.
Mm-hmm.
Using the house as a
Yes, as a test case, yes.
Yeah, true.
Yes, okay. Anything else, Mr. Nollie?
No, this thing came to mind.
Perfect, uh, calling the council, I'll start from the far end, Mr. Edge.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Parton?
What's the, I hadn't heard anything mentioned about getting rid of the rats in the house.
It was, we, we heard of that last, last time.
Well, we, uh,
How's it coming along though, we're seeing?
Um, I don't know that we've taken any bids or anything on fumigation. I think we have a pest control company that we use here, we may could just ask them. Um, but the other thing that I was thinking about, because I did give my card to a pest control guy that I saw out and I told him to, 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 to call us. Can we not just throw rat poison up underneath there and kill them ourselves?
No, fumigating a house, it, it destroy all the animals in it, it's totally different than putting poison up there. Cause you put poison there, you may or may not get them.
Okay.
And also you don't, you don't have any, you don't have a license to do it. Pesticide application license. And I, I say that from personal experience, I, I have a license, or I had a license, I didn't, I didn't allow it to sugarify it. Fumigating versus just throwing out pesticide is totally different.
Okay, alright, then that, that, I was, I was looking for cheaper easier way to do it, but sometimes it's not possible.
In reality, it works and you could do it, but, you know, how you kill the guy's dog next door and all the other kind of work.
Mr. Parton?
That's it?
Is it? Mr. Teagle?
Nothing.
Alright, um, administrator for minutes?
Where do I start? Okay, um, got a phone call from Luis who did the renovations here. Says he is done with the work, he finished it on Friday is what he says. And I would appreciate if I could get a couple of minutes with the council to take a look at the finished work, like perhaps in the morning. Make sure that you guys are good with what's happened, let's take notes. If there's anything that needs to be done, then we can notify him, if not, then we can cut in the check, but I'd like that you guys is eyeing on what else needs to be done in here.
Yeah, I definitely would like y'all, as your schedules allow, to, to take a turn around and then in the day, like, look at it and say, I have remarked several times how good this room looks in here. It's just, it's completely different, absolutely different.
I do think on that note too, we're going to have to start considering the floor.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it is pretty clear, you walk through, you can hear crunching.
Mm-hmm.
This is a heavily used floor, we're going to have to get this under control.
One of the things that, that every interior decorator will ever tell you is if you change a, if you change a picture, you're going to end up spending twenty thousand dollars fixing up the sofa.
Yeah.
Because one thing makes the rest of it look bad. Just doesn't look good.
Yeah.
Um, we, we've got some money for a door, I mean, for, for a door. Weren't we, weren't, weren't we talking about using that for a new lock?
Yes, so, so one of the things that I know we're going to need to put on the list is the door hardware. And I don't know if Luis would install that or if we could get somebody else to do it, I'm okay with either one.
Yeah, I, I don't know, it, it wasn't part of the original.
I know, yeah, I know.
Um, there are a couple of things that I've seen that, that I want him to do that were not on the original. And there's some things that he did that were not on the original too.
Yeah.
So, uh, but he took care of that interior, that outside bathroom. And he fixed, you know, fixed the cracks in the ceiling and did that, I think he made the floor.
Oh, I haven't been able to.
The epoxy thing.
He did?
Yeah, and that wasn't part of it.
Okay.
But anyway, um, we've got this in May, I, if you walk around tomorrow, I got sharpened up the way out to you.
Okay.
And there are several things we need to do too, now we've got this place painted up, fixed up, patched up. We need to go use that mason board in there, it's got the water stain.
Yeah, we just, we, 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 we need to get a whole new one.
Well, that actually is something we actually asked Luis about as well. And I think he may have caught it perhaps, but again, that needs to be part of the ball.
Okay.
So that, yeah, he's aware of that, but not sure what he thinks. Uh, next, I have a quote for getting enhanced security here. Uh, I do have questions, I've already got a call out to the company. Um, but this is just sort of kind of giving a sense of what may be coming down the line. Um, not, not action, not acting for action right now, but this is certainly works. There's been a discussion about these tables and chairs in this room. And I understand that we would like to surplus, as I understand the conversation, in order to get new ones. What is, obviously to get there, what is the idea on the surplus?
So what I would like to do is I'd like council's permission to surplus the tables. Um, and then we will, uh, work with Mary Quinn to give her, uh, some of them in exchange for her work in, uh, the redecoration and coordination with the community center. And that would happen after we got the, the buildings in.
Well, my thing is that this is a room that we rent, and I don't want there to be tables here, that the new tables in here and we're flooding it up with tables and chairs.
No, 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 no.
We didn't really have it forebated, so this could clear out so we can get new stuff in.
Yeah.
So I'm saving this.
Maybe at the time and place, well, I don't, I don't think, I don't think she wants we want to.
Okay, uh, okay, that
So what you can do, you, you might be able to auction them off or
Okay.
Yeah.
Or, you know, if, if any council members have any need for the tables, I mean, with, certainly, this is a volunteer council.
I love them, I wish, I wish we could use them.
Okay.
The, the, the tables, no, but the stands are great.
Mm-hmm.
We need to figure, because I don't, just reiterate, I don't want to bring in a whole new set and have people having their birthday parties or wedding ceremonies, I'm going to have to remove the tables and chairs.
Yeah.
Somebody, somebody should know how to do a, an, a online sale.
Oh, there, we have, there are several different mechanisms we could use to surplus them out, I mean,
Yeah.
and you just take a picture, you upload it and then they take a
Just save a couple of for, for her, that's all she wants. I know a guy, I know a guy in J who might want.
Parton, did you have anything?
Yeah.
Okay.
Also getting quotes on Toshiba printers, and then we talk about it a little bit, um.
Floyd, did you want to go back and talk about building the security?
I'm just saying that some of the, the line party got calls about that. Um, active code enforcement is still working, I'm also communicating with, uh, at this point, UniCode about code of protection. Um, I would like to go ahead and get the auditors to come on in and audit our books as we need to. And I have the notes on the door, but there's a lot of moving parts that are going on on that other side of the wall, and we're working those as well too.
Anything else? Any questions for our administrator? Okay, um, one of the things, I am going to take some time real quick to go over some mayor's updates. Um, I want to pass this down, you guys have seen, um, this before. This is the project list that we talked about back in August and then again in October. Um, but I have also gone on to the next page and started adding some more projects that we got to in late twenty-two and, and moving into twenty-three. I also came up with another task list, which is basically a punch list for the parking lot. Um, and then finally, the last page is just some ideas and some options for the pond out there for the pit. Um, I, I would like to use it more than just a, a standard retention, detention pond, I'd like to make it pretty, but that's no surprise. But I, I give you guys this information so that you, first of all, you know, some of the things that I've been working on. These are all projects that I haven't even started, worked on or are in progress or have been working on over the last couple of years. Um, and I wanted to put it in this format to show you guys so that you can see all of many different little bitty projects that we have going on and all the things that we need to boggle up on. I wanted to show this to you also so that you can kind of see what I'm talking about with my procurement complaints. If you can imagine getting three bids or four bids on every one of these projects, you can quickly see how that would grow and grow and become administratively burdensome with the staff that we have. I have no problem having a transparent, open government, but when you're trying to do this many things on the limited budget and limited staff that we've got, it just, it, it makes it a little more, a little more apparent, a little more, a little more real. And then the third reason I bring this to you is, is twofold. Number one, I know that I don't have all the good ideas in this room. I know that you guys can take this list, add to it and make it better. Um, and then the other reason I show it to you is I'm hoping that you guys will see something on here that you like and that you say, hey, this is something that I would really enjoy doing, and then you help me do it. Um, if that is the case, it would be your project to run, your idea, and you would have almost my complete and full authority behind it to do the work. Um, and I also wanted to show this because this does become a part of public record. And Miss Polly, I have one here for you, even though I will apologize for the size of the font. It's teedag and tiny, but we're going to make it a little bit bigger. But having this list in front of us and you see all the things that we have to do. And so as I'm working out there and I'm trying to get these things done and I'm trying to find ways to do things efficiently and effectively. I put in a lot of effort in, in thinking and finding it. And then finally, one day, I have a guy that comes along and says, hey, I can help you do this. I've got experience in one and two and three and, and, and I live here too and I can come and help you. That was a really good day for me because I got someone that's invested, is someone that cares about the town, cares about the way that it looks, cares about how his kids are raised. And then I started getting a little bit of anxiety, a little bit of worry. Well, because the guy that came to me is the husband of one of my council members. And that to me just makes me feel wonderful that a family member wants to come and help. Earlier today, my stepson and I cleaned up some garbage from around town hall. We picked up about five bags of trash. My daughter's asking about the library, you know? We are a small town and our families are going to be involved. And the one thing that I want to say and that I want to point out is that if someone wants to come and help us, I say let's bring them in, let's do it. I don't, uh, we do things in a transparent way, we are open and honest, and if anybody calls any of us and asks us a question, we will answer. But I just wanted to take a moment and say that when we have all these, all this work that is being done by a mostly volunteer government with the exception of three staff members, anything that we can do to make our jobs easier while getting good governance and following the law, we will do. And I know that, that people roll their eyes and say, oh, well, so-and-so is only doing it because of what, or because of whatever. And if that's the case, fine, we've talked about some of this stuff for a year and it's still not done. And then we come down to get it done and getting ready to go, and we want to put roadblocks in front of ourselves. I say as long as we're talking about it and as long as we are being open, as long as we're being transparent, let us go down the road because these things, we've already seen, I am amazed at the difference that I feel when I turn into this parking lot. Having an updated and refreshed community center, having the parking lot out there. And the timing for those two things happening within about the same three to six months, man, it has just been a great feeling to come to work here every day. And Tom, thank you for your connections with Luis and thank you for sticking with it and getting him out here. Um, but it's going to be those, that is, that, those kind of connections that make small towns special. And I don't want to be so afraid of the perceived, um, conflicts that we slow down or that we stop or that we, we look short when we should be looking long, because a lot of these things in here, I've gotten shuffles from some of you saying that we don't need this or we don't need that, and you're right, we don't need it now. But when we finally do get all of our stuff together and we do need downtown signage or gateway signage, I don't want to be scrambling to try to figure that out ahead of time. And, you know, we're, we're, we're the little city that could, and we keep on doing it, we keep on going. And that's part of what makes the magic special, is, is having folks like that who are willing to come in and, and do something because they love it. And I just, I just wanted to share it with you because that's, this is why we, we, we keep tilting at the windmill so that we can do these things and make it better. Alright, I'm off my sub box.
I volunteer to do your newsletter.
Hey, that'll work, okay, perfect.
You have to tell me what you want in it though.
Okay, we can do that. How lovely, thank you, Ms. Polly, because that's, that's something that we did the first couple of years, but then the pandemic hit and we fell off, but let's do it. One, alright, I'm off my sub box, do Z-mates have anything?
I'd like, I'd like to, uh, sit down with somebody and have them come in with all these different acronyms. I don't follow, I don't follow this.
Okay, so I, so I do want to apologize, I do need to go in and clean it up, but I knew that, I've been meaning to put this list together for about three months now, over, before the holidays came around and, and I just, I finally got it, but I'm going to clean it up and, and, and clear it around and, but yes.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, just few things removed, you know, it's not going to, it's not going to improve the background progress.
Mm-hmm, well, that, well, that will, no, no, it has been improved and it will continue to be. But yeah.
Mm-hmm, free to knock it down.
By knocking it down, absolutely, in progress. And I'll go back and put little indicators that show you where it is.
Be, be a good, uh, set of topics for
Work sessions, yep, mm-hmm. And, and this is honestly was, is kind of worn out by the work sessions that we did, um, right before the holidays. Because I'm going to list to go into our master slash strategic plan. So, um,
Or not.
Or not, yeah. Okay, I'm done talking. If, uh, y'all are done talking too, I'll, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Tom Teagle, as the first.
Second.
Stan Parton as the second, all in favor? Unanimous, thank you.